Well, clocks, but we're going to go with my iPhone and get the meeting started. Welcome, everyone. We are going to, before we go into a roll call, we are going to ask our newest trustee to run through her oath of office. Trustee Lundquist, welcome, and I'd like you to do your oath of office now.
Well, thank you. I, Jody Lundquist, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Northwestern Michigan College Board of Trustees, Traverse City, Grand Tversk County, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Jody. Again, welcome. We're really proud to be able to have you at this table with us. Now, Lynn, can you please walk us through a roll call?
Andy Grochek.
Present.
Dan Warren.
Present.
Jody Lundquist.
Present.
Kenner Bieber.
Here.
Ken Warner.
Here.
Mark Keely.
Here.
Laura Adler.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And fellow trustees, do you have any additions, deletions, or rearrangements of our agenda? Okay, with hearing none, we are going to move right into, it says on our agenda, the mission and values and action that I say the heart in the room. And I love this part of our agenda. So Jim Bensley is here with us, and he is going to introduce our student Jonathan DeGroot. Am I pronouncing that correctly, Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay. So Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you all. It's a pleasure to be here as it always is. We just completed our study abroad season for 2025. We sent over 65 students to five different countries, and they were led by 10 different faculty members. So we're really proud of that. Since we began about 11 years ago, we have sent over 650 students, NMC students, to over 26 different countries. And along with them, because they're all academic, we've sent about 40 different faculty members. So again, very proud of that. During our study abroad programs, we often ask students to compile a journal. And so obviously, you've probably read Jonathan's. Jonathan's is one of the best that I've ever read. So we're pleased to be able to host him here tonight and have him answer any questions you may have, give you a little bit more insight on what happens on study abroad. Jonathan?
Thank you, Jim.
Well, hello. Thank you for having me here this evening.
Yes. And did you want to run through, maybe bring to life a little bit, the journal that we did get to receive and read?
Of course. When people ask me about my study abroad trip, I say that I was hot, sleep deprived, and I got sick, and it was the best experience I've ever had in my entire life going on that trip was. And it was very eye-opening in several different ways. One of the biggest things that I took away, I'm going to school for social work, so it is my passion to go into a field where I get to genuinely help people. And one of the big things that we were doing over there was working with migrants, and it truly showed me that no matter where you are in the world, all of us really want the same things. All of us value our friends, our family. We want a better future for ourselves and our children. And this could be in the United States, and this could be West Africa. It could be anywhere in the world. We are much more alike than we are different, even sometimes the media doesn't want us to think that. The experiences beyond that are absolutely indescribable. I could, I could go on forever about it.
Yeah.
Being able to see the different cultures, the way that everything is. A big thing that I've noticed, especially with the United States, is we like to, you know, we're kind of self-centered in some ways. We like to think that we are like just about us, that our way is the best way. And it showed me that there is no best way. There's difference. That we value different things, and we put priorities in different things, and there is no better or worse. There's just being happy and getting by and finding your own meaning.
Outstanding. Sounds like we are quite honored to be able to have you here as a student and sharing this experience, not just with the people you went on the trip with, but maybe others throughout your other programming. So we thank you for sharing the journal with us. That was really impressive. I agree. I didn't see all your other ones, Jim, but I agree, it was really well done. Thank you for being a part of NMC and joining in on that trip.
Well, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Jonathan. Okay. And as we move forward with our strategic focus, I would like to invite Jason up to the podium, and I believe Troy is going to join you, Jason, as we get to hear about Strategy Five, which is an enormous strategy in our plan, institutional distinction and sustainability.
So unfortunately, Troy will not be able to join us today. He had a personal matter that he had to deal with. So it'll be me, but we met on Friday and we're completely in sync on things.
Yeah.
So good, good to go on this. So thank you, everybody, for having me here tonight. I will be covering Strategy Five, institutional distinction and sustainability. We often refer this one as a plan within a plan, but, and I'm guilty of it, but I think it short-changes many of the things that we've done with this strategy. I mean, this strategy allows us to have this aviation expansion, which, as you were driving in, you probably saw that hangar that's going in. It's a fantastic facility. You know, it's 21 planes that we're going to have docked there. And again, that was because of this plan and the vision this board had, as well as our NMC team. This also allowed us to position the Great Lakes Water Studies Institute and really the whole region around a blue economy. It was this strategy in the strategic plan that made it okay for us to look into the Freshwater Research Innovation Center, and more importantly than that, move forward with it as a key asset of the region. This was the execution of a number of other plans, including the Great Lakes Culinary Institute's Reimagining Campaign, which we'll see later. They were able to take a very significant deficit and flip it into a gain, as well as add new programming to their institute. And then within this, this plan also allowed us to implement a strategy around IAF, our WNMC team, Denos Museum, and then also deploy our unique maritime culinary certificate. So I, like, I'm guilty of it. I say, oh, Strategy Five, it's looking at these institutional distinction, but when you dig in, we've done a lot of things over the last three years. A couple successes that I want to highlight, and I'll also include some of the challenges at the same time, because I am well aware that this is a very lengthy memo. Aviation, which I said, not only the execution of the physical assets, it's that our aviation team, led by Alex Boye, is already gearing up. He actually has students in the pipeline to enter those, to use those planes, to use those facilities right away, and he's actually been working with our HR team to bring the individuals on board. So it won't be like we built this hangar and then we wait for a while. Him and his team is ready to go. And hats off to him, I've heard from Troy specifically, about how willing you've been to just accommodate all these changes. Sometimes working in a dynamic environment can be challenging, and he has nothing but positive things to say about you and your team on there. Great Lakes Water Studies Institute, we're fortunate, as we were doing analysis of our construction bids, we continue to drive down the price of the Freshwater Research Innovation Center. It's coming in about 28.8 million, which leaves us just a $3.4 million gap. And so our foundation team, led by Catherine Marvin, as well as Matt McDonough at Discovery Pier, feel like we can close that gap. We're already making inroads on it. We have a couple additional asks with foundations out right now, but we're all feeling really good about how we're sitting with that facility. And we'll have a groundbreaking in early September with an open date of spring of '27. Along those lines, we continue to work on filling that Blue Tech Pipeline, actually right downstairs here in Parson Stulins. We have one of our first companies from our last challenge. That's Wave Lumina. That was a recipient of one of the Aqua Action Awards. But we're doing it again. We're calling it a Blue Tech Challenge. We're taking the lead on this. We have 10 finalists that will whittle down to three, and they'll present at Oceans 25 in Chicago in October, where we will select individuals to be the recipient of this year's Blue Tech Challenge. As we move forward, this grant is a multifaceted grant, and it actually has dollars incorporated into it for companies to use or locate their labs in the Freshwater Research Innovation Center. So again, we're filling that pipeline and not just having teams there at Oceans 25, Traverse Connect, led by Warren Call and Camille Hoisington, myself, our Great Lakes Water Studies Institute, Fish Pass, Great Lakes Fisheries Commission, and others, will actually have a blue booth focused on Northern Michigan's Blue Tech Economy. So we'll have a large presence there. We'll have kiosk. We'll be able to not only promote NMC, but also this region for companies, industry partners that are interested in relocating to Traverse City. Some of the challenges, though, with that objective, is we continue to look to fill that enrollment pipeline. We'll see later on in this, in our metrics, that we're still continuing to struggle when it comes from a financial standpoint in the Great Lakes Water Studies Institute. I'll address that a little bit more as we get closer, but just know that we do have that program going through a Pacer review, and so that's a continuation of the strategic process even after this plan sunsets. Great Lakes Culinary Institute, like I said, they continue to meet their financial targets, but more importantly, chef, lessoner team are actually deploying a new food and beverage certificate, which you'll see here in the next coming months. They're actually working with industry partners and advisory board members to build out a beverage management or food and beverage management that are focused on some of those craft aspects up here. So we'll have, we have craft breweries, we have wineries and others. What are those skill sets that someone needs to go from front of house, maybe into management? Or maybe somebody that wants to retool from our Institute of Ag Tech program or other culinary areas with that food and beverage field? Really excited for the work that's being done there. Craig, this team at Denos continues to make headway, even though there's been some changes at the federal level with grant funding. He's able to navigate those. In addition, Denos continues to be on target with their fundraising goals and membership goals. They are also going through the Pacer review. That's our program enhancement sustainability review process, looking at revenue diversification through events, event planning, and other things that they can bring to the Denos Museum. So again, they'll be part of that process moving into next year. Nick reminded me today, and I was glad that he did, as we looked at IAF, which was one of our objectives. When we started this process, we had these membership goals that none of us were really sure IAF was going to hit. They had goals around memberships, they had goals around participation, attendance, and then also financial sustainability. And so Jim Bensley kicked off that work with us here and then handed the reins over to Alex Tank, and I'm really happy to say we have met those targets for International Affairs Forum. Not only have they set record attendance at the events, they have record membership, and they have a sustainable business model moving forward. So really excited by the work that Alex Tank, led by Jim, and then also Mike Leonard and Stan Otto from our advisory team, were able to drive that through, because now we have a sustainable program we can hold up into the future. And then Objective Five, which relates to our marine maritime culinary certificate. You saw last month, we're revising that certificate based on feedback from industry partners, from companies where our students have landed, and our alums themselves, who say, hey, we need some tweaks in this. So hats off to our Culinary Institute for continuing to make those modifications. I'll scroll down to the metrics part. It's a little funky to see, but you have the document in front of you. Aviation continues to have great headcount and is exceeding the revenue targets expected from this objective even before we've launched that hangar expansion. So again, we made the right call by moving forward with an expanded fleet at the college. Great Lakes Water Studies Institute had improvement of about 50K over last year, still in the deficit. One thing I want to take note of, though, we'll see this into next year, next fiscal year, we did not fill one of the open positions we have. So we will have a cost savings related to personnel. However, as we increase enrollment, we'll kind of reimagine or rethink through what that position looks like, so that as we have enrollment gains, we can maximize that person and help continue to offset the cost. But next year, we'll continue to see improvements just based on the fact that we haven't filled that position, we are going through the Pacer review, and we have enrollment targets for that program, working with a recruiter. Great Lakes Culinary Institute, like I said, continues to make great headway. They will move into a monitoring mode. Denos has lots of metrics on there, but takeaway is they're meeting their targets, though we are looking at increasing overall revenue as it comes to the Denos. And then IAF, I talked to you about, you know, record number of memberships. I think we're at 317, and then attendance was through the roof. And just two weeks ago, Catherine, our foundation team, and Alex were actually at the horse show, where they received a grant to cover, or I shouldn't say grant, but a gift to cover some of the upcoming program for academic year '25, '26. WNFC is making their targets, and then also maritime certificate. Takeaway for this is, if you're looking at this, so Great Lakes Water Studies and Denos will move into our program review process. We have checks and balances in place for the next year, as we continue to monitor those, including targets around financial performance, enrollment for Great Lakes Water Studies, and other aspects on there. The other programs, aviation, Great Lakes Culinary Institute, IAF, WNFC, et cetera, become part of our operations. We monitor financial performance through our, what we call our A3 process. So just know, because we're done with the strat plan, we have two we continue to focus on moving forward, and then the rest, while they won't be formally in a plan or in this plan, we do have mechanisms in place at the college to ensure that they continue on the right track. Thank you.
Great. What questions? Go ahead, Ken and Jody.
Yeah, Jason, first of all, I've always loved this strategy. I love the name of it, institutional distinction and sustainability. I think this is what a strategic plan should be all about. And the fact that not all of the goals have been achieved, I don't think is something you need to worry about. We want stretch goals, and some of them were stretch goals and have been achieved. And I just want to commend you and the group who've been working on this for the successes achieved to date, but also for the idea that there was some, a little bit of stretch in this part of the strategic plan. And I, as you know, I don't think I've seen that throughout the entire strategic plan.
Ken, I'm glad you brought that up. Our ESINT group, which is made up of faculty and chairs that Stephen leads, are already looking at what are those next distinctive programs that we should be looking at for the next plan, using much of this as a model, as we line up with some of our future focused education issues.
Ken, if I can share, just to remind folks, because not everyone was here three years ago when this was developed, but to give credit where credit's due, we had four strategies. And it was at the 11th hour that Rachel Johnson said, we need something around institutional distinction. And she really pressed us on that, and I think everyone has said, wow, that was a good thing to add. So thanks to Rachel for pressing us on that.
Yeah. Great point. Jody, you had a question?
Andy has questions.
Okay.
So last time we, last time we did this review, there were a number of questions about Great Lakes Water and Study Institute, which we were told was going to be solved by, was going to be looked into by this Pacer review process. What is the timeframe for giving the, I have two questions. One, what is the timeframe for talking to us about that review?
We can talk about it whenever you'd like.
Yeah.
You know, we can put it on a future agenda.
Okay. I'd like to see that come up, especially because, I mean, it's great that the number of, the number of contract hours is increasing. That's wonderful. That's what we're looking for. But I, I don't really understand, if you are, for example, in '24, you've just missed our, the contract number that we were looking for. We were at 593 versus 600, but we expected to break even at 600, yet we had a net loss of like 300,000 with seven people below that. Obviously, the revenue number is probably there. That's probably a cost issue. It would probably be useful to spend some time on some of that. So we just understand what's there, because that is a key. You know, we hear lots of great news coming out of over there, and I do not want to downplay what's going on over there. I think there's amazing things, but this is kind of a core piece that we're trying to grow underneath, and we're using that as leverage, and it doesn't seem to be getting there. I just want to make sure the focus is there.
And I agree. And just, and I think that's an issue where we will resolve this in the next plan. Remember, I inherited this plan when I started in '22, and some of these baseline numbers and targets were not developed with the full picture in mind. And so this is an example where 600 contact hours will never get us to where we want to go. And so as we're looking at that, I have full data, working with Nick and Troy and others, that when we jumped in this Pacer process, we said, we're starting over, we're looking at the real numbers. And so you're absolutely right. I don't want to seem like, if you look at that data there, that, oh, they're just seven away, or 37 away, or whatever, they'll make it. No, because where we were, that target has moved in those three years. And so it really is that part of it.
Which is why the first question, because that was the answer last time you did this, which was, hey, we're going through this review. Well, if you've gone through the review, we'd like to understand this, because there's nothing wrong with sharing your dirty laundry. Let's talk about what we need to do to dig in here and understand it and see how we can help and support that area, because that is a key area that's not having the growth. Let's leverage the board here to help you with that.
Great. We'll make sure that happens. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Two quick comments, one very specific that I, some trustees, if you're not involved with IAF, may not have noticed, but something that distinctive and new that I have this doing that's mentioned here are the satellite locations for IAF. And that's extending our reach in other parts of Northern Michigan, which I think is really exciting, has the potential to be a model in some ways that we want to think about. So I just think it's wonderful that we're doing that. And then the other thing that I just want to mention, having distinctive programs has, there are likes to that, and there are contrails to that. Staymate or any enrollment marketing firm would tell you that having distinctive programs not only helps you recruit for those programs, which some of these we need to do nationwide and internationally, but also it has likes for your other programs. So the more that these distinctive programs can be a part of our branding, admissions marketing, et cetera, and I'm, I know the incredible staff is thinking about that, but when you have distinctive programs that are unique to a region or even unique in the country, that has other effects that are downstream. Just wanted to mention that, that it's really important.
You're right.
Yeah. Great comments. Anything else for Jason? Go ahead, Mark.
So with FRIC, we have partnerships. Is there, is it on someone's plate, a responsibility to be able to continuously push the occupancy while we're recruiting? You had a plan, you know, going to Chicago and all that, but is it someone's responsibility? Just because we have so many people working on this, I'm just curious if that's on somebody's plate.
So right now, it will be on, so Ed Bailey, who was our Director of Portfolio Management and Strategies, he was on my team. He retired in, into June, and so his replacement position, at least for the next three years, will have that responsibility mark. Because right now, because it is a consortium, that's my concern too, is that nobody owns it. So for the short term, we will pick up that burden, being one of the two members of the Freshwater Research Innovation Center, and drive the tenant piece. Obviously, we got support from Discovery Center, Pier, Traverse Connect, and others, but ultimately, it'll be that person's, you know, their, their goal, or college-wide goal, or whatever, to look at tenant, tenant attraction and where do we stand.
Okay. Excellent questions and comments. Jason, thank you. I, you know, the plan is one thing, to keep track of all the stats and the KPIs, but when you really just look at this strategy, like you keep saying, this is a plan in itself. So thank you for all of the updates that you provided, and I would expect we've got some decisions coming up down the line with our university center and so on, that will, and maybe even AI that will help us broaden this as we grow.
Yes.
So thank you very much for the report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Now, we move into our faculty report, and I am excited to invite Nancy Partial and Kristin.
Selatheo.
Thank you, Selatheo, to the podium to talk about another study abroad experience, this time in Ireland. I understand you have a little bit of a conversation to have, but most of the presentation will come forward through a video. will come forward through a video.
Indeed.
All right.
Yes. So.
We're still going to talk now.
Okay, okay. Well, we do have a timer, so just in case.
Yeah, so I'm Kristin Selatheo, and I'm in the Communications Department.
Nancy Partial, also in the Communications Department. I teach English 99108 and English 111.
And I also teach English 99108, and then this class called EDU 100, which is sort of the class that is, that the study abroad went through. And so EDU 100 is a 10-week class, so it's sort of compressed because of all the information that they learn. We want them to learn as early in the semester as possible because it's all ways of being successful in college. So it's a three-credit class, and its entire focus is being successful in college and, as they discover by the end, also in life. And we do things like, we study things like time management, goal setting, the role of sleep and exercise in learning, mindset, metacognition, all those kinds of things that we know are important for student success. And so that was basically what the study abroad was focusing on. And this class is generally, I mean, it really does sort of absorb a variety of students. It is primarily taken by students who have low GPAs, either coming out of high school or from their first semester or two, or three, of college. And so there are students who clearly have the potential, they just don't have the strategies. And I am of the opinion that literally all life and college success is strategies, right? Like, people don't just know how to do things, they develop strategies to do things. And so it's really about that. So it's mostly student, it is primarily students with low GPAs, but it also is students who want to kind of up their game before they transfer to a four-year school. That tends to be students who take it in the spring. We also find students who are getting ready for the nursing program, take the class, especially if they're worried about all the high-stakes testing, especially if they have a lot of test anxiety. And then often to older students who've maybe been away from the classroom for a while, and they just, they don't really remember how to be a student, and so they just want to sort of like retool their toolbox.
We want to thank Jim Vensley, because for a long time, he had this vision of sending students on the study abroad program, a study abroad program, that students that were not the typical students. The usual students are more academically successful. They are further along in their studies, usually. They're able to afford to go overseas, and it was really very clever, I don't know who came up with it, to have this during spring break, because the students could use their financial aid. It's a one-credit course, so financial aid counted for that. And also, the Global Opportunities Fund offered a $1,000 scholarship on top of that. So this was all put together so that these students who normally wouldn't be able to participate in this kind of a program were able to. This, another great thing about this is the experiential learning opportunity. You know, you've heard about experiential learning. It's important, and these students were able to put into practice the things that they learned in EDU 100, the time management, the importance of sleep, working with instructors and peers, communication, things like that that they learned in class. So it was a perfect opportunity for experiential learning. One thing that is not up there, but I was thinking as I was sitting back there, that you should know that these students did not whine.
No.
They, they had to hike four miles in the rain, and so did we. They had potatoes for every meal. They were pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed. It was a really tight time schedule. Nobody complained, and I think that's pretty unusual, considering what we put them through. So that's another indication of the type of student that went. They're, they felt really lucky, really blessed, I think, to be there. Because it's a one-credit class, they needed to do something school-worthy, not just these things, these activities. And so they had a journal. They did a lot of reflection, which is also an important part of study skills, reflecting. And they had a journal, and we gave them journal prompts every evening, and they sat and they quietly wrote in their journals. And the things that they wrote, because they turned them in, were, I don't know if surprising is the right word, but they showed, they expressed that they really learned from this experience, and it's life-changing. They would tell you it was life-changing.
So one of the students who came along, Shane Smith, he was tasked with putting together a video of the whole time, and he put together about an eight-minute video. He also put together a shorter video for this very, very moment. And you can see on the map where we were. Ireland is really far north, and we were in the farthest northwest part of Ireland in Donegal, and it was quite rural. And as Nancy said, like, it was, it was, it pushed all these students, it challenged them, they were facing things they'd never faced before. Some had never left home, some had never been away from their parents, some had never been on a plane, you know, all those things. And the group leader, who was Irish, she's like, "This group is crazy. Everybody complains normally, and your students don't complain?" And they didn't. I mean, it was like, we swelled with pride at every turn, even when they were struggling. It just was troopers they were through the whole thing. It was really cool. So anyway, so here is the short version of the video. I think you have the longer version, perhaps in your packets or somewhere, but here's the short version that we are going to be able to share. Where are you? There it is, right there?
Favorite experience was on the island of Aranmore. It was just an absolutely beautiful island. I wasn't really expecting much when we got onto the ferry, but when I got there, it was just absolutely magical. The entire trip of Ireland was absolutely magical, but that specific island was amazing. Go over to the cliffs, it's right next to this beautiful lighthouse, and we looked over, and you could just see miles and miles, and it felt like the cliffs were just hundreds of feet tall. We just sent us down the staircase, but once you got down there, it was just a completely different world.
Something I really struggled with on this trip was patience. I'm a really independent person, and I like to work at my own speed. And during this trip, most of the activities were group-based, and I had to be like, "Okay, I gotta be patient, everybody's gotta go through it," and I just wanted to go, go, go. So I was really struggling with that.
Coming in, I was thinking, "Oh, this is going to be where I can see my heritage, this is where I can see everything connected to me." So when we came here, it was very jet-lagged and everything. I didn't know what to do. But then, once we made it through the first night, I was just so happy, like, to be in this country, and I love this country as a whole now even more than I already did.
I would say something that I learned on this trip has been, we've done a lot of different activities that required us to communicate with each other and work with each other. How it's the communication and just in general, knowing how to work with different people and recognizing people's strengths and weaknesses is not a strength of mine. So getting to like practice that and do that repetitively through these different events has definitely been helpful.
Credit to Hannah and Melissa for basically teaching me how to shoot an arrow better than I would have.
Probably.
Because breathing helps. I always knew that breathing helped, but when you take a deep breath to calm your nerves, it would be like, it would be more calm and more steady so that we can go beyond our comfort zone and try things that we don't usually try.
I think the faculty members on this trip were really special. I learned a lot from all of them, really, but specifically what I've learned from them, I think, is resilience. Like, even if you're feeling uncomfortable in a situation or you want to quit, it doesn't mean that it's going to stay that way, it doesn't mean it's going to be that hard the whole time. So that definitely helped me, because I was struggling a little bit in the beginning. But yeah, they just made me feel really comfortable, and yeah, they were just very wise and good teachers, good, good faculty members.
Lovely to end that one. What a coincidence. Is it this one, Lynn? Yes. Okay. So yeah, so that sort of captures it, and looking, like, listening to that again, like, it just makes me a little teary, because, you know, it was a challenge for them. It was really hard, and they had never done anything like this at all. And to have that opportunity was really amazing for them. And the longer version has more sort of testimony to just how life-changing it was and how it affected them, and it was super cool.
Outstanding.
Questions on anything? Yeah?
Amazing. A great program, wonderful things you're doing. How can we help you? How can we help it grow? What can we do?
You know, interestingly, Lindsay and I were just talking before this meeting, that EDU has, over the last, I don't know, like, four or five years, has really sort of started to take off. It was a very tiny class for a while, and then we worked really hard to get more students in and spread the word, and the advising office has worked really hard to get students enrolled. And it turns out, in the past, we could barely get two sections per semester, and we just had to add a fourth section for this fall. And I do think this trip made a difference. Like, you know, you need buzz, and I feel like we're starting to shift a little bit the concept of the class from a class for bad students to a class for students who want better strategies to succeed. So I think that mindset shift has been important for the class and has brought more, more students on board. So, I mean, the more we spread the word in different parts of the college do, I think, I think the better. And just that support for these students, because they are not the students who usually do study abroad, makes a big difference.
I want to add that the students who do take the class, all of them say, "Everyone should take it." I mean, I wish when I was in college, I could have taken this class. I think it would have helped me a lot. So that's another thing. It's growing because students talk about it, and they think everyone should take it.
Interesting. Yeah. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I've got two questions, one of them about the trip itself, one of them about the class. Start with the latter. How many people are in the class as opposed to those who go to the trip?
So in the fall, we'll have four sections that I think are kept at like 18 or 20. So we'll have about 80 students in the fall. This class also is taught to our early college students. So last spring, which was when this trip took place, I had two regular sort of college student classes, and then I taught three high school versions. So I taught it for Tercy Central Early College Kids, Travis, or TC High, which was our second year working with the TC High kids, and that was, that has been super powerful and really great for those students and helped. It reminds me of the speaker we had at our opening conference a couple of years ago, who was like, "We need to reach out to our students that were not, that are not thinking about college," and those TC High kids are those kids, because they are smart and engaged and ready to learn, and they just got stuff in their way that often makes them think maybe college isn't for them. And so they, and then I did a Greenspire class too. So it's depending on the semester, but I would say it's about 80-ish students take it, and then we had, oh?
12.
11?
11.
I think we had 11. We had 11, because we had Shane.
Shane.
We had 11. We counted them every time, I swear. I don't know, like, 11, seems like we got most of them. We didn't lose any.
So how was it decided which 11 were going rather than the other 69?
Yeah, great question. The second semester students were out just because they didn't have time to. So it's only first semester students. In this case, there were only three sections. And really, it was kind of a first-on-first serve. It was also, I kind of personally tried to target students that I thought were, like, we sort of talk in education about, like, you know, the very top row, they're good to go, right? The very bottom, it's like, "Oh, man, I don't know." But there's this whole big chunk in the middle who just need one little push, and they're going to be good to go. And I was really trying to like target those students who were hanging in the balance a little bit, and with the right push, could really be successful. And I think, I think that's who we got. But there were definitely students who wanted to go who couldn't. I mean, there's potential.
We don't take high school students.
No, good point. And we didn't take high school students. Yeah, you had to be a regular college student.
So then I did have a substantive question about the trip itself. You're in Northern Ireland. Did you discuss the troubles? Was that a subject that came up? Because that would be a complicated thing for them to deal with, I would think, but a very important one.
Yeah.
How did they react to that?
We actually weren't in Northern Ireland. We were in the northwest part.
Of the Republic of Ireland.
Yeah, of Ireland. We did drive through Northern Ireland just briefly.
Oh, because I'm looking at the map, and you've got arrows pointing to.
Well.
Oh, I see, that's the north, that's still Ireland. Okay, that's not, yeah, okay, I got you.
This line right here is the divide between, and it's like really skinny right here. But yeah, so that's Northern Ireland and then the Western Republic of Ireland. But we did talk about it a fair amount, like, in the video, there was kind of an older Irish-looking guy, and he came one afternoon and spoke about the history and the language, and he talked about the troubles, and it came up, not infrequently, but it seems that people have like, it is not, it didn't strike me as still a real huge issue for people. It was part of the history, but it didn't seem to be an immediate thing right now.
But the students reacted.
I think this is one of the most wonderful programs we could have here. It helps the students put everything else they learned in context, because we are citizens of the world, whether we want to be or not. So if you set a goal of including everybody who takes the credit courses here, I would fully support that.
That's awesome. Yeah. I mean, it was cool to have a small group. They really, I think they bonded in a cool way, and none of them knew each other really before, a little tiny bit if they were in class together, but yeah, I mean, it seems a very, very, very powerful thing. And like you said, they realize they're part of a global situation, and even the political stuff, and the history stuff, and the linguistic stuff, and it was pretty cool.
Any other questions, comments?
Real quick, it would be really interesting to learn to kind of track these students. My best guess is their retention is going to be higher than even your students who were taking the course here, but also are they going to do more study abroad? My experience with, with her students doing study abroad is they kind of get addicted to it, which is a wonderful thing, and speaking to what kind of itself. But I'm going to guess the student success outcomes are going to be small, small, and but they're going to be outstanding.
Good. Well, thank you so much for being here and for doing this for our students and for our college. I would say as you, you know, you're talking to Lindsay about it, start doing some tracking to Pam's point. Maybe there's.
We actually are.
Okay.
One of the incentives.
Well, let's keep tracking, and this may be a broader discussion for our college because it has such an impact on lives. So thank you very much. Appreciate all you do.
Thanks for being interested.
Absolutely. Okay, and at this point of our agenda, we're at public input, and I don't see that we have any. Okay, then we're going to move into our updates, and we'll first hear from President Vensley.
Okay. I'd like to share three things with you, and the first one has three things within it. And I'd like to share three numbers that I think help tell a story out of those 51 pages of the packet, and I'm going to kind of connect those three numbers for you. The second thing is I'm going to share with you three new things that we're doing, which I think really speak to the thriving nature of the college. And the last thing is I'd like to provide two recognitions to folks here. But to that first one of three numbers. it was a simple line in all that fifty-one pages, but I want to make sure if you glossed over it, that I draw your attention back to it. And it's the fact that in Troy's budget report, we noted that we're anticipating a 1.75 million dollar surplus. And we still believe that at the end of this fiscal year, while we haven't closed the books yet, that we're anticipating that. And I think that's worth noting because while obviously part of it is income-driven in terms of receiving higher tuition income than we anticipated, there's also a cost side of great cost management from across the college this year. So obviously finishing the year with a surplus is, is good news budgetarily. Second, or second number with regards to fundraising, you probably did pick up on this in the foundation's report. But again, I think it's so impressive that it bears repeating that Catherine and the foundation had a goal of 3.2 million dollars for their fundraising goal. They came in at the end of this fiscal year at 5.1. So 5.1 million versus a 3.2 million dollar goal. It made it the highest non-campaign year of fundraising ever at the college. So again, and as you know, lots of challenges. So achieve that amidst all of that as well. And I would also highlight in there, you know, that August 6th, we have the scholarship open returning after a few year hiatus. Catherine told us this morning that we're at 100% of the fundraising goal and 75% of the golfer's goal. So we're really pleased that that's made a really strong comeback. The third number relates to enrollment and I hope you still have excitement about this because we are looking at seventh going on eighth potentially consecutive semester. It still excites me every semester to hear Todd and folks talk about this. But our fall numbers right now are tracking at 11% up in terms of an 11% increase versus the contact hours of last fall. Granted, there's still time between now and fall, so don't lock in on that 11%. But wow, you know, to be looking at double digits is pretty impressive. So I share those three things with you because amidst that fifty-one pages, there's a lot of places you can look and pay attention. But I think budgetarily fundraising and enrollments, some really strong messages there. The second thing is to share with you about three new things or three innovations. And some of these aren't necessarily new, but I'll give you the new sort of context to them. One, you know that the tugboat is now here, having been through the refurbishment process over the winter. July 2nd, it did pass inspection and July 7th, it began work. So think of that, you know, Jerry and that GLMA team, you know, wasted all but five days to get that thing to become a productive asset. And this summer, probably thirty-six cadets will participate in a thirty-day training to earn their tow vessel endorsement. In other words, be certified to operate the tugboat. So talk about a, a great new thing or an innovation that he's brought to the curriculum there at GLMA. The second is to highlight something you already heard from Jason, but to draw your attention back to. Because again, some of these things are so big, but you know, we get into a meeting and it's from one thing to the next. But I want to shine the light on September 12th, we've got a groundbreaking of the Freshwater Research Innovation Center. If you remember, it's been about four years that we've been talking about this from vision to fundraising to planning to articles of incorporation to a board being in place. And now all of those challenges that, you know, we're facing. But the fact that we've got a groundbreaking, in other words, we've been successful with the fundraising. And as Jason noted to you, we're down to a 3.4 million dollar funding gap that we're very confident that we're going to close in on. But September 12th, we're going to put a shovel in the ground and we're going to begin construction on the Freshwater Research Innovation Center. And the last of those three new things, thank you to all who did participate this week and to those who weren't able to be there. You missed something really, really life-giving. And it was the 3D concrete printer ribbon cutting. So again, yet another ribbon cutting. We often think of that in terms of physical facilities, but here was an almost $200,000 asset that we were cutting the ribbon on. And hats off again to the foundation and particularly Megan Bowlesma, who did a great job bringing together industry partners, faculty, staff, UAs, board members, community members. And the excitement that filled that room was palpable. And I think what the best thing was is you got to watch the 3D concrete printer doing its work. We got to see it literally printing there that day. So again, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that was, you know, driven thanks to a faculty member with an incredible passion, Carolyn Andrews, who, you know, partnered with Jason and just about everyone else within the college to breathe life into that. So those three numbers, those three new things, and I'm sorry, I couldn't come up with a third here, but two recognitions. One, I shared with you a couple of months ago about Marcus Bennett, his transition coming up here, as he's going to be moving back into the associate dean of campus life role. So I want to shine the light just for a little bit on, on what Marcus has accomplished. And I think Marcus is one of those people who has worked tirelessly, not only tirelessly, but courageously for the last three years, helping execute on our strategic plan DEIB goals. The, the good news, bad news that Marcus and I have kind of jokingly talked about, he's done a good job and he's done a great job. The bad news is he's worked his way out of a job. We've accomplished those goals and three years ago when we sat down, I said, here's the challenge. It's to execute on this plan. We've executed on those strategic plan goals around DEIB. And I think what we see happening is we're evolving. Not that DEIB is going away, but I think what it's evolving into in the new strategic plan is probably something around vibrancy as we talk about that as our, our new focus. Marcus, two things that I, I want to hold up that I think he's done incredibly well. One is out of that DEIB, he's focused on belonging. Because that was the most relevant thing for us as a college. And he pulled us all together around belonging, but to a very specific end. And that end was student success. So he helped us as a college for three years figure out how can we leverage belonging to support student success. And what that means is Marcus never politicized or got pulled into a politicization of DEIB. That's something you never heard in this community because we stayed very focused on student success. And that was 100% thanks to his leadership. You can see in my report comments, some of the bullets of, of things that, you know, Marcus helped us do. I do want to specifically note, Marcus didn't necessarily help us with the management of all of those things, but it was his leadership that helped empower others. And this morning, Marcus said something I think very poignant. He said, you know, as he makes this transition, he said, not because there's a stop sign of something that we're stopped, you know, doing in terms of DEIB. He said, it's more like a, a merge sign. He's been so successful in helping empower others that it's become part of our culture fabric. And I've got confidence that even though Marcus will be stepping back into that associate dean of campus life role, the onus is going to be on us to, to get that merged responsibility and accountability. So it's a very long-winded way of wanting to give some public recognition to Marcus. And while he's stepping back into the associate dean role, I told him it's absolutely not a going back. His challenge is to say, how does he take these three years of a leadership development opportunity and reshape that associate dean role? So I think with that, I'll stop there and look to any comments or questions.
Ken, I'll start with Kenard and then Andy.
Yeah, the, the concrete printing is clearly impressive. And I understand we're going to start teaching this fall a class in that whole business of concrete printing, not the specifically operating machine, but the mortar that they use, the whole project. When the student finishes that class, what kind of job market is available? Or are we going to have to help develop that market?
Yeah, Jason can say more to that, but what I'd add specifically is we're not looking to train people to become 3D concrete printing technicians. But this technology specifically is to help a carpenter on a job, an electrician on a job, a framer on a job, that they can step in and they have one more tool in their general contracting tool belt, so to say, that they now know how to employ concrete printing as a, a resource.
So they would, some business would have to acquire a machine and then start using it in order for the students to use their education.
Yeah. And there is intention, you know, with that in terms of trying to help develop that market. And you might want to say a little more on that.
Yeah, Ken, that's why I think when we, when we brought the, the first round of, of 3D printing technology forward, that's why we had the HBA and the Builders Exchange working with us because they see this as a need for their clientele. And even at that event last week, Bill Additive who was there was already working with two local contractors to use that equipment here regionally. Because as Nick said, it can complement other aspects of, of their, of their learning. And that's why it's baked into our existing construction certificate. But ideally, we'd be able to outfit our contractors with similar type of equipment. And like I said, they already have a lead on two contractors that want to start that work. So I'm excited. I think we'll start seeing some of that land here.
Thank you.
Andy, you had a question?
I think I saw that there is a presenter or a major donor for the, for the scholarship open this year. And I was just going to say congratulations because I don't think, we haven't always had that, have we?
Thanks, Andy. Yes, we have typically had a top sponsor, but I would say it was one of our concerns after being away for four years that we wouldn't. But Bill and Susie Janis did come in at the top sponsorship, so we're very grateful to them.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, comments for Nick?
If I could, I have just one last thing because I did say there were two bits of recognition, but I wanted to take a breath after recognizing Marcus. Is just to remind everyone, as we go to the MCCA annual meeting, we will have one of our faculty recognized as the outstanding Faculty of the Year Award for 2025 for all of 28 MCCA community colleges. Christie McDonald will be receiving that award. And that's two years after Susie Janis earning the alumnus of the year award. So keep in mind, you know, 28 community colleges, there's a lot of faculty, a lot of alumni. So this isn't a certificate, you know, participation. This is our faculty and our alums being recognized as the best in the state. So we'll be able to celebrate with Christie at that award ceremony.
Excellent. Thank you, Nick. Excellent report. I am going to continue on a little bit with some of the mentions of our 3D printing, our Freshwater Innovation Center ribbon cutting. My chair report this time, this month is focused on ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking. And here's why, because we, earlier we heard about our strategic initiative, the institutional distinction and sustainability. We have, and Nick had brought up in his report that in a fifty-some-odd-page board report, there are a couple of things he wanted to point out. Well, in a very cluttered coming up calendar for us, I want to pull out some really important things that if you haven't recognized them yet, get them on your calendar. The first one we already have had, which is the ribbon cutting for the 3D printer. September 12th, we have fresh, we have the Freshwater Innovation Center groundbreaking. On September 15th, we have our aviation hangar ribbon cutting. And on September 23rd, we have a ribbon cutting of sort for our university center partners moving to the Beckett Building onto the main campus. So my chair report is not a reminder to update your calendar. It's a reminder about the big vision of what is going on in the next 30 days. All of these things have been in our strategic plan. All of these things, we've been through study sessions on, we've been through major conversations on. And the staff and the team and community members have come together for our college to make these things come to fruition. So it's important that we're at these ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking ceremonies to really celebrate what is years of hard work. And, and all those celebratory events, very important events as it relates to our strategic plan literally being executed and coming to fruition. So you know, it seems like a lot on our calendar. It seems like ribbon cutting after ribbon cutting. But I just want to remind us of the importance and relevance of it and how important it is for us to show up to these things. So a pretty simple report for this month. Are there any questions about anything for me, your chair, or comments? Okay, with that, Kenard, we have had some important building and site committee meetings and you are going to pull out of the, we don't have your latest committee meeting in the consent agenda. We'd rather, we'd rather have an update from you on that.
The project we're looking at is, I think, probably the biggest in terms of dollar cost project that the college has ever had. It, it's going to run somewhere between 18 and 20 million dollars. It's for geothermal supply to a number of buildings on the main campus, replacing a 60-year-old boiler system, which we've been lucky so far and hasn't failed in December. So they've been talking about this project for about eight years. And each year that passes, the cost goes up. It was 12 million and then 15 million. And now we don't know the total number, but it's probably going to be in the range of 18 to 20 million. We have committed to this so far, only 2.7 million from the federal government. We have applied for a grant for seven and a half million. But we are concerned that that grant might not actually be paid to us by the federal government. We do know that a local church had a grant approved and did a geothermal project. After they put it in, they were told they were not going to get the money. So to keep the college from being in a situation where we commit ourselves to a project for 18 to 20 million dollars and not have the cash to pay for it, we have asked the administration, and they've put together a schedule, to get the financing strategy in place before we let the next section of the contract. The, the, the nature of this is that we'll get, we'll have cost savings with geothermal, but we won't have it until it's all installed and we turn it on. And that's going to be as much as maybe two years out. So we don't really want to commit money now that has no return for maybe two years without the cash available to pay for it and get it done as quickly as possible. So we've asked the administration and they have moved up the schedule. And in August, the board will be asked to look at the financing plan, which would be put in place this fall when we get the first stage of the design-build project done. The, the first stage of that is going to tell us what we're going to do and give us a good estimate of the cost. And that will happen probably sometime August, September. And then we're going to apply for the bonds. So we will have the cash on hand. And I would encourage all of the trustees to find out as much about this project as you can. Ask Lynn to send you the documents. There, there is a lot of material available. So that we are ready to vote on the financing at the next meeting. And then in September or October, we vote on the next stage of the construction. We just don't want to put shovels to the ground till we pay for it. We know that we currently have only about $10 million in liquid assets, much of which are already committed to something else. So we don't want to start building and sink money into something where we don't get payback for a while, when we can't pay for it. So this is why we're talking about it today. I can't answer a lot of questions in detail about the financing, except to tell you that when we did the aviation project, Troy went and looked to see if we could get bank loan financing. The banks certainly could do it, they didn't want to. And it seems like the only real route for us is to issue bonds, they're tax-free bonds. The interest rate somewhere will come in somewhere between probably 3% and 5%. No community college in the state in the last couple of years has had a bond in excess of 5%. And a lot of them around 3% and 4%. So that's what we're probably looking at, but we won't know until we put it out and it'll be by competitive bid so that anybody, a, a bank in Las Vegas could decide to buy 5 million. in Las Vegas could decide to buy five million of our bonds, and another one in Dallas, another five million. We don't know who's going to buy them. We're going to encourage our local banks that we do business with to take a look at it, but they don't have to do it. We'll be looking at a, at a national market to sell these bonds. Now, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer. I'll probably have to tell you, we have to wait till Troy comes back.
We'll save, before we get into questions, that Kenard has done a good job with the building and site committee, really managing this process. It's been a tough decision. We have, it's not a, been, it's not been a tough decision on the geothermal project, but it's been difficult on the financing, because a big chunk of it is volatile, I should say. So appreciate your leadership on the building and site committee. Kenard is right, there's, this is why we brought it off the consent agenda, so that you can learn more about it, so that when it comes in front of you for approval in August, you feel ready to go on that vote. So back to Kenard's question, do you have any questions about this?
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I will just state, we do also believe that if the grant funding, if the energy credits come back to us, we will be going forward with the bond financing, understanding that we can pay that off in advance.
Yes, we'll, we'll go for thirty-year bonds, we could do twenty, but we don't want to put ourselves in a bind where we end up like a college did at the UP, where they couldn't pay their bonds, so they ended up closing the door.
Yeah, we will not.
We do not want to put ourselves in a cash flow bind.
No.
By having heavy payments. So we're going to stretch them out, but we will negotiate. Part of the bond sale will be the ability to prepay, if in fact, we get the grant from the federal government.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Kenard. Now, moving forward, I would like to entertain a motion to approve our consent items.
So moved.
Thank you, Pam, and a support.
Support.
Great. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay. We are going to move into some action items. We have a couple closed sessions as well, so bear with me as we move through these, a few action items, and then a couple closed sessions in between. So first, I would like to entertain a motion for foundation board appointees, that the recommended approval of the reappointment of Barb Benson, Debbie Edson, and Al Zalinski to our NMC Foundation Board for a term of three fiscal years, that commencing in July of '25 and ending July 30th, '28.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and I'll take a support in there as well. Any discussion about that reappointment? Okay, with none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And any abstentions on those? Okay. And aviation engine purchase. May I have a motion to recommend authorization for administration to purchase two Cessna 172 SP engines for the amount of $120,000? And this is being funded by the Aviation Capital Reserve Fund.
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And any discussion on these?
Just a clarification, one-twenty for both of them?
I.
One-twenty total. Thank you.
One-twenty total for two engines, yes. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And any abstentions? Okay, that passes. And our Hagerty Center AV is in need of an update. So may I have a most, motion to recommend authorization for administration to enter into a contract with Waveform Audio-Visual Solutions in the amount of $278,000 to replace the audiovisual system at the Hagerty Center. This is going to be funded out of fiscal year '26 plant fund.
So moved. Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And all those in, or excuse me, any discussion on that?
It's really needed.
I agree. I know, I was actually rather excited to see this. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And any abstentions? Okay. Now, may I have a motion for us to close this regular session and move into a closed session, to which we will discuss strategy connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements between the college and the Michigan Education Association?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. And will you do a roll call vote, please, Lynn?
Mark Peely?
Yes.
Ken Warner?
Yes.
Jody Lundquist?
Yes.
Pam Horan?
Yes.
Andy Robichaud?
Yes.
Kenard Bieber?
Yes.
Or Oliver?
Yes. Okay, we'll take a couple minutes to pull some signs down. Trustees, we will just stay right here.
Thanks Stephen.
Okay, so we are back in regular session with a couple of items to approve and before we do that I just want to make a general comment that we are about to take a vote on a faculty association collective bargaining agreement as well as faculty chair collective bargaining agreement. But before we do that, I want to make mention that I am very pleased to share that we've come to not just a solution oriented negotiated process for these contracts, but we've come to a very innovative contract for the first time in my experience and that innovation comes in how our faculty is not just supportive but excited to add a component into this agreement this year that talks about advising our students. It was important to our faculty, it's certainly important to everyone else here at the college that our students have the utmost success and the utmost resources to have that success and so within this contract there is notation of advising that our students will get to increase their success by all of our faculty members and that's really impressive. It's a big, big shift for our faculty and we're very proud of their innovative thinking in this. So it's a great way with this contract to invest in our faculty ultimately, our students ultimately, our community, right? So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to recommend authorization for administration to enter into an agreement by and between the Northwestern Michigan College Faculty Association, MEA, NEA, and Northwestern Michigan College effective August 1st, 25 through July 31st, 28.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you and support, thank you. And any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor please signify by saying aye and opposed same sign and I don't believe we have any abstentions on that. Okay, and next may I have a motion to recommend authorization for administration to enter into an agreement by and between the Northwestern Michigan College Faculty Chair Association, MEA, NEA, and Northwestern Michigan College effective August 1, 2025 through July 31st, 2028. May I have a motion for that? Thank you Kenner, does support?
Support.
Thank you Pam. And any discussion here? And all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed same sign. And any abstentions? Okay, and I'm going to ask for another motion for us to close this regular session and to go into another closed session. This is to discuss the annual mid-year performance evaluation of the president per his request for a closed session. So moved. Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And all those, well let's do a roll call vote for that Lynn.
Pam Horn?
Yes.
Ken Warner?
Yes.
Andy Rubicek?
Yes.
Kenner Weaver?
Yes.
Jody Lundquist?
Yes.
Archili?
Yes.
Laura Alboeder?
Yes. And we have another shift, we again will stay right here.